I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. I said good evening.
Oh, hi. I talked right over you like normal. That's why I like to meet in person. It's hard to watch you and watch you again at the same time. Um, we need a motion for the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes that you can see at this time? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
I'll make them.
Okay, Tim, second?
I second it.
Thank you, Tina. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on, teacher, staff, any comments, questions?
Hey Lynn, this is Matt. Sorry to jump in here. I was just gonna ask you, where are you guys logging in via Zoom or is this only on Google? Uh, I'm on the phone right now. I'm looking to get in via email or on Zoom so I can see everybody, but I can't find a link to that. Are you just on phone tonight?
We're on Google. Um, Chris, can you send him the link?
Yeah, I'll reset it right now, Matt.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Hearing nothing from the staff, community, any comments, questions? I hate these things. Okay, hearing none. If, uh, we'll move on to finance. There, um, we gave Louis the night off. There's no new information since our last meeting. There is, I do want to say, tentatively, at pre-town meeting, we had mentioned the property tax yield. And I, uh, I had said at that time it was a worst-case scenario. Um, and that is so far proving to be true. They've come out with three new numbers for the property yield. All of them lower than what we have in our budget. Of course, it's too late, um, for us to change our budget. But, um, again, it's gonna be the worst-case scenario, which is, I think, the 2.6% tax increase. Right now, like I said, there's three different, um, figures that they're talking about. The best one would actually, um, make our property tax equal or less than last year. It would be a decrease in our property tax. So we'll just keep our fingers crossed. Hopefully, they'll come up with the final, um, number before pre- or before town meeting. And we can tell you for sure, even though you would be voting on a bigger budget than we would actually go out for. Um, and other than that, um, any of my guys have any questions as far as the, uh, budget? Or finances?
Nothing here.
Chris, did you have anything?
No, I mean, I, we can talk about the town meeting presentation, which really is gonna be more just about the select board. We'll be hosting that. I know of a couple items to discuss or just bring up in my superintendent's report. Uh, but really, it's just the link we posted on the website and it'll be held just as a normal meeting would, just our board meeting, so. Uh, we'll have a presentation that we'll go through. I think, well, it's gonna be pre-recorded. And then we'll just answer any questions that, uh, the public might have.
Okay, we can get back into that. And just a reminder to everybody out there, um, that town meeting, unlike our regular meetings or pre-town, starts at seven. So that's seven o'clock on March 1st, and again, the school board would go first. Director's orders. Uh, the board all received the warrants in their email. If there are no questions, if I could have a motion to approve the director's orders warrants.
I had a question. I noticed that one of them had a late fee. Is that typical? I didn't go back and look at all of them, but it was $35. I'm hoping that's something that can be fixed so it doesn't keep happening.
Yeah, we're trying to, um, by doing, by doing the, uh, warrants and, um, director's orders by email, we were hoping to get rid of all of them. I'm not sure what happened with that one bill. Um, but that's very rare now because we, you know, if they get them to us quick enough, I can approve them and there's no reason for late fees. But I'm not sure exactly what happened, if it got hung up in our queue somewhere or what happened, but good question. It happens very rarely anymore.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, if I could have a motion to approve director's orders.
Motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, say aye, whatever.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, that'll pass. The next, uh, two items are approval of minutes. Um, you did get these in your email. The first one is set of minutes from January 11th. Which was our last regular meeting. Do I have any questions, comments, additions, deletions, corrections?
I just wanted to thank, um, her for spelling my name correctly now.
Yay, Shauna. Well, it is kinda tricky the way I understand.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the January 11th? Minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from January 11th.
Thank you, Tina. Second?
Second, second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Hey Lynn, Lynn, this is Matt. Lynn, can you cast a vote in this? I haven't had a chance. I'm going through all the documents we've had. I'm unprepared and was unable to get a chance to review the minutes. Would you be okay with, uh, casting a vote if I abstain? I just don't like to vote on something if I haven't had a chance to read through it.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Uh, all in favor, raise your hand or say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Tim. That'll pass. Next one is the approval of the minutes of January 19th, which was our pre-town meeting. And we were all online or listening on telephone. Were there any changes that anybody wanted in the pre-town special meeting?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting in January.
Thank you, Tina. Do I have a second?
Sorry, what was that?
I need a second to the motion. Okay, thank you, Matt.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Matt.
Had to do something today.
Any more discussion on the minutes for the pre-town meeting? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. There would be no opposition because I saw everybody raise their hand or say it. Chris, superintendent's report.
Thanks, Lynn. Uh, a few things to kinda go over. So the past couple weeks, we have been working on getting everything ready, prepared for the town meeting. And the budget vote. As Lynette had said, the, uh, town, Rutland Town Annual Meeting has been scheduled for March 1st at 7:00 PM. Uh, we will be going first. I know that Louis and I are trying to coordinate with, uh, some of the other town meetings to make sure that Louis can be here at the meeting to answer any questions. I know that there, there may be some question of finance that, uh, Louis can't address, that maybe myself or someone else may not be able to. Uh, so we will have everyone there, uh, on hand for, uh, for the public. Uh, right now, the annual reports are being finalized. Get ready to be sent to the printer. Uh, we, we're finishing up the final details with that. We're also finalizing the PowerPoint or the presentation for Peg TV. Uh, will be done a little bit different this year. Um, you know, obviously with COVID, we cannot go into the studios, so we are asking, uh, Debbie and Sarah, uh, myself, Louis, to individually record on Screencastify. And then some of our coaches will stitch them together and we'll have a presentation. So we're trying to think creatively, uh, as to how we can do this. But, uh, the good thing about this is we'll actually be able to, uh, get this onto the websites a little bit sooner than we would normally with Peg TV. So, um, once we have this up and running, we will, uh, publish this on the Rutland Town School website for the public to begin viewing at that time. So, uh, all voting will take place via Australian ballots, uh, March 2nd, uh, 2021. As well as ballots will not be mailed this year, but if you need to have some T-ballot, please just contact the town clerk. Um, a couple items with GRCSU COVID-19 testing. We did have our third round of testing on January 27th. We had 193 staff members across the SU take the test. Uh, we had zero positive tests. And I know I sound like a broken record, but, uh, like I said, this is just a snapshot. It just gives us a, you know, kind of a glimpse in terms of, you know, at that moment and at the time, where we are at. Doesn't mean, you know, the next day or the day, you know, prior, uh, you know, where at. So it's just, it's more for data analysis and just for the state's kind of review, how things are going. Uh, as far as COVID update across the SU, we have had 12 cases thus far. As many of you are aware, we did have, uh, multiple cases last week at Rutland Town. Uh, but what we were finding is, uh, we, you know, the contagion is actually in the community. It's not necessarily in the school. And because of mitigation strategies and protocols that we have in place, we're not seeing a school widespread. So I do, as I say in every meeting, I just want to thank the administration and staff for continuing to do the right things. And enforcing the, the proper protocols and strategies. It is helping. We have third break coming up. It's the 15th through the 19th. Uh, I have two items to kind of review. First is that we are, uh, going to be providing meals to all families who are interested, just as we did during the winter break. Uh, so, uh, I know Debbie and Sarah have already released some information, but if you need information about that, please reach out to one of them and let them know. Uh, the second thing that I would just wanna stress is while after winter break, we did shift to remote for one week. We will not be shifting to remote for the week after remote, uh, after, after February break, I'm sorry. Uh, so February 22nd, we will be returning to in-person learning. And I say this as of today, uh, because everything is a day-to-day, you know, uh, analysis and decision-making. So, uh, as of right now, we will be returning in person around the 22nd. If things change, we will make the adjustments if necessary. Uh, we will have, uh, Lisa Madison and myself have been having our mid-year meetings with Debbie and Sarah to kind of review their goals, take a look at this past year. Uh, reflect upon things and as well as taking a look at the spring and start to project what school will potentially look like for next, uh, you know, fall. Uh, that's still kind of up in the air, but, you know, we are optimistic that, uh, you know, that next fall will be, uh, a return to some sort of normalcy. That, uh, there will be a shift away from this, but, uh, like I said, we just don't know. We can't predict. So therefore, we are, we're starting to look at different scenarios. We will also be involving Rutland Town staff and those decisions this spring as well, as we look to build out what the, the, the fall will look like, as well as parents and community members. Uh, Rutland Town School is also in the process of finishing up their mid-year assessments. Uh, these assessments gives, you know, some good data in terms of growth, as well as assessing, uh, areas of concern and areas of strength with our students. Uh, it allows the teachers to, uh, design curriculum and lessons moving forward. That will assist our kids. We know that the pandemic has taken a bit of a toll on our students from a social standpoint, an emotional and academic standpoint. But our staff are doing everything they can to, uh, limit the impact and they're, they're doing a great job thus far. And the last item that we have is just a legislative update, including your packets this week, was just a, uh, copy of the VSB, uh, Education Legislative Report. Uh, kind of covering the first couple of weeks. It's light reading for you, so if you have some time to kind of pour through it, but there is a lot going on in, uh, legislature. So just, uh, if you have some opportunity, take it, take a look at it. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Um, while you're mentioning legislature, I will say that last week, I believe it was Wednesday. There was a bill dropped onto the floor, um, was rather sneakily done or quietly done. The bill is asking to remove all SROs from the schools in the state of Vermont. Um, mandating that no school can hire an SRO. There's a lot of, well, right now, there's a lot of opposition to this. There was none when it first dropped because nobody knew about it. Um, so if you get a chance, the bill is S063. Um, and get your, let your legislators, your representatives know how you feel on this bill. Um, I think getting rid of the SRO is a true detriment. Um, there's no other way for children to really become comfortable, confident in law enforcement. Um, while there are criminal incidents that happen in school, usually not elementary level. Um, I, being in the realm of law enforcement, it's, I think, given an opportunity to get these youngsters that are having troubles a little earlier, get them help as far as they, if they need mental health. Um, any kind that we can do to get them off of the track of the criminals. Um, hopefully, we can save children from going down the wrong path. But they're only gonna get confident and comfortable with law enforcement by seeing them. Um, I know our Senator Karen Zini is trying to put a bill through, get it together, put it through, where it expands the SRO's, um, position in schools. Bringing back not only just mental health, um, concerns and assistance, but things that bring back the DARE program for the littler kids. Um, so anyways, he's putting that together. That should be coming on the floor shortly. Um, but just if you would, keep an eye on that and like I said, um, get the word out there to your representatives if you're against. Um, well, or for, I can't tell you how to feel, but to get rid of all the SROs in the state of Vermont. Again, thanks, Chris. Co-principals report. Sarah, Deb?
Hi, good evening, everyone.
You wanna start, Sarah?
Sure. So we just wanted to thank all of our families, teachers, staff, um, that worked with us, uh, through the weekend and early last week in regards to contact tracing. And a huge shout out to Pam Mock, our school nurse, Lisa Lones, all the GRCSU nurses, as well as Chris and Lisa for their help and support. Uh, good news is we received a grant for $3,000 from the Vermont Principals Association. So we're gonna be purchasing some additional kits for our social emotional learning program and some books for our pre-K students to read at home during remote learning. As you know, currently basketball, um, at the moment is up and running. Um, and Mike has been working with our tech department to livestream our upcoming basketball games, so fingers crossed. Our report cards for younger grades will go home this Friday, and for middle school parents, they can view report cards, uh, in real time on Jump Rope. Those are not printed and sent home. We are fortunate that Alex Barassi, which was one of our student teachers, uh, with both Mr. Schneider and Mr. Rowe, is now our, uh, school-based substitute. And he is running the middle school after-school homework club that started last week on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays. And just a reminder, as Chris had already mentioned, that we will be switching to remote learning for town meeting day on Tuesday, March 2nd.
And in some building matters, um, I'd like to thank Kelly Treya for completing an inventory of our flooring in the entire building. Um, and he created a plan for gradual replacement of that, so, um, we would be responsible for materials costs. Because he and the staff could do, um, any replacement that we would need in-house because he has that experience, so he's done that. He's also worked on creating some manuals for, uh, cleaning of the building and how it's done to share with staff. And he's been sharing those with other staff in the SU as well. And, uh, ice rink is up and running. The kids have been really enjoying that, using it for PE. And, uh, Mr. Rowe is going to, um, have a kind of a option to skate over a break for some students as well. So, um, he's gonna run that through the rec, but the kids will be able to skate then if they sign up for that. So that's kind of exciting.
Very good. And I wanna thank, of course, administration's staff, educators, teachers, about the COVID issues that have, you know, they come up at the spur, spear of the moment. I know getting a notification on Sunday is next to impossible to do anything with. You can't really get hold of the, um, the State Department to assist in it. Um, but I, I know there's some rumors out there and we really have to watch what we're saying around the other parents. Um, you have to have faith that your administrators are doing what they, they should do. We always err on the side of safety. Um, we would never bring back school in school if we didn't know it wasn't safe. Um, so to the best of their abilities, they've been working really hard. Um, I do also want to let everybody know that I'm working hard on getting our teachers as far as the vaccination goes. I am trying to convince people that our teaching staff in the state of Vermont, um, of course, I'm more concerned about Rutland Town. But, um, you fall under the A1 category. A1 is people that have lunches, feeding children, also as far as medical care goes. It doesn't have to actually be a nursing thing. If you get a child that's sick, um, teachers and staff have to take care of these children first. So I, I believe they fall under the A1. I've been out there, um, everybody wants, or different states, United States itself wants in school. Um, for students, and that's fine, but they need to get you your vaccinations, um, or the ones that want it, just for that safety point. Um, so I am working on it. I know I don't talk a lot about what's going on in the background, but, you know, never mind getting rid of our SROs. Let's get everybody vaccinated. So, um, I just wanted to pass that along. And thank you, Deb, and thank you, Sarah. The next one is personnel. We have no contract recommendations, correct, Chris?
That is correct. We just have resignations.
Yeah, I see that.
Retirement.
Um, yeah. Oh, and a retirement. I don't have that. Okay, um, I know the school board knows, um, unfortunately, since the last meeting, we have received, um, official notification from Deb Rodolphy that at the end of the school year, she will be leaving us. Um, I'm sure it was a hard, well, it's, it's hard on us. I'm not sure how hard it is on you, Deb, but, um, and so we did get a letter asking um, that she be allowed to retire. Um, and she deserves it. I mean, she's been in our district, never mind our town, for quite a few years. Deb, did you have anything to say before I say no to your request?
I just wanted to thank you all. I mean, uh, it's been a great experience, working with all of you.
Okay, good. If I could have a motion to accept the request from Debbie Rodolphy for retirement, um, at the end of this school year?
I'll reluctantly, uh, this is Matt Lynn, and I'll reluctantly make that motion. I would like to rule against it too when it does come up. But, uh, anyway, Debbie, thank you very much, but I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Matt. Can I have a second?
I, I can do the second and I just wanna say that I feel the same way. We'll miss you.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor of the motion? No, yes?
Aye.
Aye.
Unfortunately, Debbie, it passed, so, um, we're gonna let you off the hook. And, um, you will be missed, and I'm sure that you'll, uh, your brain will be picked heavily before June on information.
That's the plan. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. The second one we have is, um, Shelley Pelkey. I did not get a letter personally or request effective the end of the school year. Sarah Pelkey, who has been a parent with our school, will be leaving us. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Tina. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Hand wave. Okay, passes.
Lynn, if I could too, I was just gonna ask, Chris, um, do we have anybody coming up, uh, for their year-and-a-half reviews? Uh, meaning they're gonna be approaching the tour? Is that something we're gonna look at in March, or we just haven't, we don't have anybody in that cycle?
We'll be discussing that in March, Matt. So I'll have a list for you, uh, on the board, okay?
Thank you. Okay, next would be, oh, my report. I think I already gave it throughout the night because I talked about the SRO. I talked about the property yield. Um, I do not have any further yet. I do wanna say that I've gotten a kick out of watching some of the town residents that have used the rink. And they've posted videos on Facebook, and it, it's a joy to watch that, and it, it's so nice to be able to get out. Um, the rink, Corinne did a fabulous job on the rink and the people that are keeping it up now. But it's so good to see it being able to be used, um, and for family activities and everything else. That's all I have for Chair's report. We have three policies, and I believe, Chris, this is the first reading of those policies?
That is correct, for all three.
Okay, so those have been in your packet. If you could review them and we will approve them or not for next meeting. The three of them, uh, are board superintendent relationship, um, it's harassment, hazing, bullying, prevention in schools. And the electronic communications between employees and students. Now, the policy committee has, um, this took a while to get through all three of these. Um, trying to look ahead, change policies that, so that we don't have to update them every year. Um, so we've gotten around a lot of those issues, um, hiring issues. Um, so electronic communications was a big one, um, because of course, they tend to have problems in that area. So if you read them over carefully, see if you have any additions or deletions or changes you think you see in them. Let myself or Chris know, and we can bring it in front of our committee. Um, our next meeting on the committee will be, is tomorrow night. Just thought you know. Old business. Anyone have any old business to discuss? Boy, we're just so active. New business. Anyone have anything new they'd like to bring up to discuss at a later date?
I was just curious, um, when we will start asking for candidates for principal, because June 30th will be here pretty soon.
Yeah, that, um, we just had a quick meeting between Chris and Sarah and myself a couple days ago. Um, so we will definitely probably bring that up in executive session at the March meeting. Um, I believe we're gonna go ahead. I'm not sure, Chris, are we gonna list that now on school spring or wait?
So now that the board has officially approved it, our goal would be to get the posting out by the end of this week. Uh, start posting for the position. So we have a position open at Proctor for next year as well as here. So we'll get both those on school spring by Friday.
And the way we're looking at it right now is, Sarah, what, well, Sarah, do you wanna talk on this?
Sure. Um, well, I'm really excited. Um, if the board agrees, I would love, um, to be, um, principal for the following year and to go back to the assistant principal and principal model. I think it's worked wonderfully with Debbie, but we've talked a lot about, um, the pros and cons of a co-principal position. And, um, yeah, I'm excited. I know it's been a really tough year. Uh, but we have some great faculty and staff, and central office has been vital in supporting us through this very challenging time. So if the board agrees, that's what I would like to do.
So like Chris said, um, shortly, it will be on school spring. We are asking, or putting it out as an assistant principal position. Um, and we'll go from there, but we'll discuss this more, um, on March meeting. Matt, this is your last meeting.
You know, that's true. I'm not sure whether I'm sad or I'm happy. I was just realizing I'm not gonna have much input, uh, on that decision and who our new principal is gonna be coming in here. And, uh, it's one of those things. It's kind of bittersweet. I'm happy for the time that I now have. Um, I plan on attending a lot of board meetings. You'll probably see me here in March and some others. Uh, but it gives me the flexibility and, you know, tonight's a classic reason why it's just time. I think I'm into my sixth year now. I am rushing through the door. Uh, thank God, my kids just handed me some food, but anyway, I didn't have a chance to review the stuff. Uh, and it was really a sign of the times. It was getting hard to be at work, getting emailed, reviewing the stuff, dealing with issues and, you know, and obviously, I think COVID was a hard time for me. And, uh, there was issues of leadership there when we came into June and July and, you know, not witnessing, or not really believing in what was happening or, you know, whether our reaction to it as a public was hard. But I think that was also important for me to step aside then and realize it wasn't a good time for me to lead. Uh, it wasn't a good time for me to be out there in front, and that's important, I think, for leaders to realize when you're not being effective at your job. So I, over the last six years, have learned a lot here. Uh, I'm very thankful for this experience, but at the same time, I'm not exactly leaving either. Uh, I really love community service. I always have. I'll always I really love community service. I always have. I'll always continue to do it. I'll always get into tough debates. I won't play the middle ground to be a politician. I will continue picking sides as they come across the table and I learned a lot being here at the board and I'm really thankful for my time. I can't say as if I'm going to ever run again. You never know in the future, but I've had a great time here. I wish everybody the best. And like I said, I'll be here on March, interestingly, watching and we'll be coming into meetings from time to time. And I would certainly say that as community projects come up, I'll be seeing them in the emails and in newsletters and different times, but you know, we've held community days here at the school and two people show up. So in the future, if those two people show up, they'll actually be three because I'll show up for pretty much every one of them. I'm always here for Rutland Town, grew up next door to the school. Kids are still there. Even long after this, I'll still help out, whether it's fundraising, anything, I'll always be a voice and a source of, I guess, work for the town and, you know, come into the school specifically. So anyway, I love this place. I love Rutland Town School. I wish you all the best of luck and it's going to be an interesting March out there. I'm looking forward to see where March 2nd comes, who our new board member is going to be and who's going to come in there. And I hope people are willing to take care of the school and understand, you know, really what this job is about, that we fund it, that we really look over the admin, but not micromanage the school at all. That's not our job. It never has been and it won't be. It's really just to make sure that the school, the people, the staff, the kids and everybody has the funding. That's really what the school board is all about and looking over those things. So anyway, I wish you guys the best and Lynn, thank you very much for taking over his chair. Debbie, thank you very much for a very trying year. I can't imagine, I wonder if this didn't speed up your retirement or not. I'd heard that you were going to be here for another year, but these are really difficult times that everyone has got through and we're all trying to do the best we can and you guys have done great. And I wanted to say, you know, both to you and Sarah, I think, and I was thinking this at town meeting, that one of the things I'm most proud about is that when we come to school in the morning, you guys are out there out front, you know, at 7:45, 8 o'clock, 8:15 now as we've moved on in the day, but you guys are working hard. And that's really appreciated. Parents see that. The kids see that. You say hello when they enter the school and it certainly doesn't go unnoticed, you know, it sets a standard for everybody. And you guys are always there for the most part and greeting everybody at the beginning of the day and it really sets the stage for how the rest of the day is going to follow through. So thank you guys for setting a good example for everybody, being great leaders at the school. Thank you, Chris. What a horrible year to come in as superintendent for, but your work, you've been great. And I think we're going to see you again. We might even unfortunately lose you to the Department of Education if you keep up a great job. I can see you going on beyond superintendent and doing other things. So but anyway, thank you very much for all of your hard work. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. I love my time here and I love Rutland Town School. So go Townies and thank you.
Thank you, Matt. It's been a whirlwind. I know that we don't always agree, but I got to tell you, all sides of the issue have always been discussed with Matt and I and the rest of the board. And I apologize if we scared people at times. I'm going to miss you. Okay, so that's it for new business. Upcoming meeting, again, we have town meeting is going to be on March 1st. It is at 7:00 PM. As soon as we get the link ironed out with the select board, we'll get that up on our site. You can go also to the town of Rutland's website. I think they have it on there and they have a link you can just click on to get to the meeting. And then March 8th, we'll have our next regular meeting that will be our reorganization meeting. And it truly will be an interesting March election. And I'll leave it there. Anybody have anything else? I don't believe we need executive session tonight, correct, Chris?
We do not, no.
Okay, who's going to be the first to adjourn the meeting?
Hi Lynn, this is Matt. I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion, readjourn that. What time is that? Six, do we really move that fast tonight? 6:35, is that true?
Yeah.
Box broke, but 6:35, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, second?
I second it.
Thank you, Tina. All in favor?
Aye.
You guys have a good month. Well, we'll kind of see you on March 1st. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Matt. Best of luck.
Thanks, sir. Take care.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks, everyone.
See you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Bye.
Good night, Chris.